All right, John, Brian, are you done? All right, everybody, we're ready to go. I want to welcome everybody to our special meeting on March 3rd. Please rise and pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the name of our God, our nation, our God. Amen.
Thank you very much. A couple of small things before our first selectmen starts. Any correspondence, Mary? Okay, we do have minutes from our special joint meeting. I believe it was February 25th. Everybody was here. Just make a motion on that for February 25th.
I'd like to make a motion where you approve the meetings from our special meeting on February 25th, 2025.
Awesome, good.
Excellent. So I'll try to make mine all a favor. See if I can say an eye. Hi, producer. Great, thank you. All right, there's some special music and a presentation for Mr. Dan Carter.
Thank you. Well, I'll ring for a restatement kind of to start making it all official like. Good evening, Chairman Ellis, Vice President of the Department of Finance. I appreciate the opportunity to present the town's next fiscal year's budget. Over the next hour, I mean, I've been told to make this three. When the department has presented their needs to the board of selectmen and the board of finance, it presented a truly, a budget that truly represented their needs. As we know, this is a difficult year with budget drivers that were out of our control. High electricity delivery rates and increased insurance costs have dominated the need for increases over last year's spending, leaving little opportunity to give our town departments more help. With that said, the board of selectmen set to work and created a fair budget that did not increase headcount and preserves vital functions for town government, especially public safety. We also attempted to continue to support programs that are important to the community, including programs in parks and rec, senior center and the library. The only increases in hours in town were for needed inspections by the fire marshal and hours at the library to compensate for changes in sick leave laws. I'll get to that in a minute. The board of selectmen removed $737,974 from the requested budget. It's a significant number, probably more than any board of selectmen seen in some years. I ask that you preserve the police budget as we're already, we've already removed a request for a new hire and two vehicles. Public safety is more, most important thing we do for our residents. I also ask that you preserve the increase for hours for the fire marshal. The fire marshal wears many hats and frankly, we need him on some additional projects right now. Specifically, the improvements of how we deliver emergency management services. Without his help right now, we will most certainly be paying even more for our paramedic services in July when our current contract expires. My point there is that I need Tom, because he wears so many hats, I need him to let somebody else do some of those inspections, meaning our part-time deputy fire marshals. So that's why we're asking for the $13,000 increase. I totally think that's worthwhile for public safety and it's worthwhile to give Tom the bandwidth we need to do through the proper RFPs so that we can reduce our costs with respect to delivering emergency medical services. Finally, as for the library, the board of selectmen have already removed $6,000 from the part-time budget, leaving enough to maintain operations. I think additional cuts would be detrimental to services. When we removed, the board of selectmen reduced the budget, we got down to a 4.34 increase in spending. I think we all realize that it's still high. And, you know, we do have other places we could look for, so I'm not going to tell you to do something to preserve public safety without giving you some ideas or something. Right now, if you do kind of the cuts I think you're going to do with public safety, I think you're looking at about a 3.82% increase in the budget. That's a great number, no question about it. But if you make some little tweaks to it, I think you'd get you down to a 3.60 increase in the budget and would still preserve those functions. Now, it does require one thing to do that we really avoid because we've done a lot of work to get our capital non-recurring up to a decent level, no question about it. But if we look at transferring some of those increases over to, are about $70,000, we can make up for those things that we're missing. In addition to that, some of the other cuts, you know, we know it's about $30,000 in healthcare, we can find $50,000 that Brad has always talked to you about. We can reduce the energy out slightly, non-governmental, you know, the account by $5,000. I think that, you know, what we've done is we've changed the way we do that anyway, we just don't get out money. And we've been a lot more efficient with that $5,000 reduction. We can also look at the way we do the debt, the debt service. If we're going to pay that a little more down, or actually say a little less down this year, $75,000, that will make a difference. At the end of the day, we'd have, you guys could get tonight doing a $8,000 cut versus $198,000 that you're talking about, and I believe jeopardizes public safety. It will also offset maybe some of the reductions that you're looking at, who would be the board of education. Maybe we all know how difficult that is, but I think, you know, we're at a time right now where we've worked really, really hard to get our road budgets where they need to be. We've worked really, really hard to get our capital non-recurring where it needs to be to maintain the doctrine. But we, very best we can with the board of education as well. I will note that the board of selectmen did make a $500,000 reduction to that budget. And it all said, I think that was a very fair reduction. So I know that you have a very, very difficult night ahead, making the decisions and the deliberations. I'd certainly be open for questions, but I didn't go through every single thing. And I will say, I understand the need for the capital non-recurring. We have some things coming up that, you know, requested projects, we know we won't take a ball towards it someday, not an expensive project, but it comes off something. We've had requests to remediate whistling and very softball fields. We need to build a new animal shelter. We've had requests now through the dog park over at McHower, because it's nothing but a mud bed. So I guess I'm saying, I know we get requests all year long for all these things that are super important to our town. And we have to maintain that capital non-recurring in a, like, we don't want to borrow or bond when we don't have it. I just think right now, you know, keep in mind with some of the public safety needs, especially, I say especially the fire marshal. We don't want to go ripping that out because I desperately need those right now. And the police department, I think we've done a really fair thing by reducing it to two cars. And at this point, you know, we have other options. So that's my presentation, short and sweet as it's been asked, and that'll have any questions if you have any.
I appreciate your concerns. Maybe, you know, coming up with these other cuts in the eleventh hour is not really appreciated. If they were able to be cut, why didn't we do it before the selectmen?
So all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I found out about those cuts possibilities this afternoon. I had no idea. I found out this afternoon.
I'm talking about you're, you're giving up some other cuts in some other departments. If they're able to be cut, why didn't we do that?
Well, if you take a look, these, these are necessarily just other departments and they're kind of to the bone kind of cuts. I mean, we're talking about the things I normally wouldn't want to do, like doing the debt service a little different, right? Doing that's going to be $5,000 extra, you know, out of debt service. But I think, you know, when we're looking at public safety, I certainly would have been willing to have that conversation, but I didn't have the opportunity. I mean, we had talked about some stuff internally and this afternoon we didn't get a chance to talk. So, but at the end of the day, I think they're, I think they're good things. And by the way, we have time. You can make your budget tonight, and all I'll ask you to do is when the public hearing comes out, right, we go to the public hearing. You have time after that to look at these. So this is not, you know, you can do what you do tonight. When the public hearing comes around, you can also look at some of these opportunities and you can do it then. So whether or not, I think they're, they're.
And I'd just like to add, you know, the board of ed and, and the administration of the board are making, are going to make some serious, serious cuts. And I don't think it shows very well if we don't do our diligence. You talk about public safety and they have a place in this town, 100%, it's quality of life. Their budget was over 6% and there's a couple of small tweaks. We're not trying to, we're not trying to lower anything. We're just trying to take a little bit from each. Okay, that, that's all we're trying to do. I'm sure the police department are going to make all the calls they need. And when you say public safety, like we're trying to make the public not safe, that's not.
Oh, I'm not trying to say you're not making a public safety, but I am saying that if you're looking at just the other $25,000 worth of cuts, it's not even, it may not be that significant out of the budget, out of the police department, right? But at the end of the day, we are trying to fund that. We are trying to keep, every year the overtime goes over, you know, a lot going on. It just seems kind of like, why go for $25,000 there when we could look at the capital on recurring and give up one thing? Maybe we could use lots of money towards something out of capital. That's all I'm saying. You know, I've been very adamant from the very beginning that we weren't willing to take some money out of the PD recently. So we cut the two cars, we cut the new hire officer, and we're not going to be adding headcount in a year whether people can. And if we have problems on term, I mean, we've tried to preserve the fact that we need employees. If we have to cut services in town, that might be the next thing that I do too. But I've, I've really tried to give a fair budget otherwise, and we have found these extra, extra cuts.
And I, I want you to understand that this six plus budget doesn't even talk about healthcare, doesn't even talk about wage contingency, wage adjustments, because they're up for a new year. So the 6% is really probably eight or nine. And we all flipped out about the board of ed being at nine. It's the same thing. Public safety is very important. It is quality of life. If we didn't think the cop was around the corner, we'd all blow stop signs. You know what I mean? I get it. This is, this is about it, but there's hard decisions being made on the board of ed side, and I just want everybody to be conscious of that.
I understood, and I'd much rather, you know, look at 50,000 less in roads and maybe 50,000 less or 100,000 less in capital non-recurring.
And again, a very smart guy said to my left, if we can't afford it, we definitely can't afford it with interest. That was bothering me, so, great. Some people think I don't listen, but I do listen. So, does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry, Cynthia had her hand up, Tom, but thank you. You can hold that thought.
Um, it's for Brad, actually, about the debt service. Now, that, you know, I think it's just after the man prayed a doctor that into a plan. You had like this whole thing with the debt service and paying out, and could you just re, re describe that dream?
So when we started this, when I took over as comptroller, the balance in the debt service fund was $3.6 million. At the time, for fiscal year 2022, our budget number was $5.8 million. Our outstanding debt for '23, which is the first budget I worked on, it would have jumped to $6.8 million. We took $1.3 million and some change out of the debt service fund to have the budget reduced to 5.5. Pretty much we took the bubble out plus some, because we had this money sitting there. This is, and the spike was because of the schools coming by.
Right, I remember that.
So the first year, we took $1.3 million. The next two years, we took $650,000 and $618,000 out of it.
Wasn't your plan based on, like, if we didn't have any more debt, like a seven-year point?
That was part of it, but it's, we kind of, the biggest part of it was to take the spike out, was the first thing we did. And then to try to have our debt slide down because theory, we weren't adding anything. We just did two huge renovations of schools. The thought was, you C and R, anything non-major projects, do have C and R, which is what we've done.
Right, I just recall very vividly the, making any more debt for seven years is how it's going to work out.
Yeah, I don't know if I said no debt for seven years, but the plan was for seven years. But it was that, the initial plan was to have 600 grand left in it if we didn't do anything else. Since then, we added more money to the debt service fund because when the audit of two schools, Rockwell and Johnson were done, the debt service fund is going to go up by at least a million dollars.
What is it right now?
So right now, so, because we haven't finished fiscal year '24. Well, fiscal year '25, sorry. At the end of '24 was $1.6 million. This year, in '25, we're taking 618 out, but we're adding an estimated million. Going into the '26, the starting balance should be $2 million around. It depends on when our, when the auditors finish the audit of '25, what may move around us.
Thanks.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman? Please, Tom? You know, I don't take lightly the idea of messing with debt service, you know, $75,000, but it's looked at it because theoretically, yeah, we're taking the count down the road and here it's $75,000 now that's paying down our debt in additional, that's what we say, Brad.
Well, it's, we're just not using the mill rate. We're paying the same amount of debt, so our debt is owed, it's all locked in. So we're paying the same amount of debt. We're just paying it, Dan's talking about paying $75,000 from a different bucket, instead of it being in the budget, paying it from the debt service fund.
And so, you know, that, that does offset some of the issues that we're having now. Because, as I know, we're only talking some small amounts of money. Mr. Chairman, I understand it's come last minute, we didn't connect on this, and I know there's time to do it. But, you know, we're only talking $25,000 there, you know, doing something in C and R. I'll leave, I'll leave my numbers, you know, when you go for deliberation, I kind of want to copy. But I think, you know, it, it does make sense, and it's a lot of the stuff you're already doing, and you added another reduction from the 460. I'm totally okay with that, knowing that we're probably going to have to do something for capital non-recurring. And maybe we could do something from our lots of money down the line, kind of help out with something that's capital related down the road. So, you know, it's a team effort. We're going to have to, you know, do some shifting around where we buy and sell. But I think we can do that, and that's why I'm just putting this forward as a recommendation, and I do think that there's time later. Sorry, what?
John, did you have a question?
So, yeah, I'll start with the intergovernment account 405. Where would the $50,000 come from? Because every year, I look, oh, 5,000.
Yeah, so right now, we have, we have.
Sorry, it's not the, it's in the social service, sorry.
Yeah, it's called NGO, I'm sorry. It's, it is line.
It's 30, 200, 5339.
NGO. Now, NGO is an important account. I know a number of years ago, folks wanted to kind of decimate that account and it caused quite a stir.
Not true.
Well, that's my, my first.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you.
I don't really look back at so much the issue, but we are, we are being a lot more, I would say, responsible with that account, we're being very targeted.
We wanted to hand it over to social services so that they could decide the NGOs rather than just, now they do. Wasn't always like that, so we thought.
So Cynthia, there was a year before you were on the board, that the board of finance removed the whole account? That's why it was still a standalone department?
Right, that's why I was, I believe I was on the board of finance because I remembered Tim.
That, I think that's what Dan's talking about, is the year that the board of finance didn't fund it at all.
What I'm trying to say is, we should be very sensitive with that account, right? Because we have folks in this town who do a great deal for our residents. We want opportunities to support them where we can and create partnerships. I think this does that. With that said, I think $5,000 could come out of it this year, was a goal, we're trying to get it back if we need it. Because we've been more targeted and better, we're not going to spend all that. Again, I'm looking for every little thing to where I could come up with, you know, something that kind of offset these other, these other cuts.
And the prior year spend of it was $11,600. So far this year, eight months into the year, we spent $8,500.
Yeah, so we're saying every other cut that I've, I've suggested is exactly what the board of finance is doing tonight, except really for, well, library, police and fire marshal. I would much rather see us, you know, get that 70 grand from somewhere else. Those are really the only ones I'm saying, hey.
And just for record, we didn't cut anything $5 million. Talking about peanuts.
Come on. I tried, I tried.
John, did you have other questions? Is anybody, Karen, anybody?
Well, then, then I do. So the debt service, what dollar amount do you think that come out of that line? And I'm sorry, that whole account?
I'm saying we do $75,000.
Okay, so tell me about kicking the can, in your opinion, kicking the can down the road and how that does that, right? So, because we talked about capital non-recurring, and we know we have lots of projects in our building, right? We have lots of money to spend. We're talking about reducing the 460 account today. So I already know that we need some of that later, right? So, so we're going to start spending money out of that account. So you recommended that, but you also recommended coming out of debt services, and I never, ever heard how that mathematically.
Right, well, it doesn't affect capital non-recurring, doesn't affect.
No, I know, but it's all, listen, the next grant.
It's, depending what we're doing, is we're trying, we're using our debt service plan to pay down our debt faster. Think of it as like paying off your principal faster. I'm saying that we do $75,000 less. Is that the best way to say it?
How do you, if you're paying off that faster, you'd save interest. There's no saving of interest. It's just paying it from another bucket. We have this other bucket of money that in this year, we're scheduled already to use $283,000 of it. Dan's proposing that possibly you go up to using $350,000 from the debt service fund. It's starting the year at $2 million to take it down to affect the mill rate, pretty much.
Yeah, so we're carrying $5 million in debt, and we're paying, and we're paying, right? I'm just saying, instead of, instead of paying, was it 283, 33, you had to be $5,000 to that. And what, from the other account, so what that does is, we're paying less out of the budget on our debt.
Right, but John, real simple, and I know you fix lawmarts. You, you have a pile of money, okay, so you have a pile of money that, that's not spent from like the school projects. And all they're doing is going to take out of the pile of money and pay down instead of charging our taxpayers this year. It's just another form of revenue.
And then I did, I did recommend 70 from C and R to, to the other point. I did recommend 70.
And that's where I thought the connection was coming through, right? So we have big projects, we're, we're going to have to bond projects down the road, right? We're, I don't even know what the roof number is, but there's some real debt going to come online.
Yeah, so, so, let's talk about that.
Short term, short term, we're trying to manipulate our debt services, take capital non-recurring, but they're all connected because eventually, we're going to create debt that we can't pay for today, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to put it on a credit card.
So let's talk, let's talk about debt. So, yes, we, we are going to have debt coming in the future. In fact, we were looking very seriously at putting one of the school groups on this agenda, this town meeting, or like, we're going to push it off. We have three school projects coming from us down the line, but no question, those are coming. With respect to this, I mean, we're looking at the debt that we're currently paying our service. We're just saying, hey, we're, we're going to take another $75,000 from somewhere else instead of our budget. And it, it's not creating a big issue or a hole, but yes, we are kind of for $75,000, I feel like it can count and gain out of the road a little bit. Like, so, so miniscule when it comes to public safety. The C and R portion though, the C and R portion, you know, we have ways to kind of make that up as we go along. For instance, we get the little bit of money every, every year, and we can do things around town that are capital related. We can kind of, as a group, say, yeah, we're working for that, just to fit in the ARPA. Like, we did a lot of things for ARPA as we came through that we knew that were things that fit in ARPA, good for the town, but also really offset things we were spent money on, especially for the school budgets last time around. Right, capital things, which is where that money should be spent. That's why I guess that's a great credit rating. We didn't do it on, you know, holes in, we create holes in budgets, we didn't do anything like that. So here, I'm just, I'm just advocating, if we do that small bit now, we do have about $190,000 that comes in each year, or this year, I think, 108, 198, 190, 190 coming this year, that can be used towards really capital lighted things and even roads.
Absolutely, minus the COVID money. We don't have that.
I'm not saying.
No, I know what I mean. So now, that's the only avenue to try to fund those projects. Before, we'd say, oh, thank God, we had COVID money, that's all tax dollar money, but at least we had that. Now we don't have that.
But we, we didn't rely, we didn't rely on that in our budget. We used that.
No, no, I'm just saying, we, you know, we funded, we funded things that we would have had, trying to money in other pockets.
Right, and, and by the way, each year, we're always going to be juggling those sort of things. Like, right now, we're, we're trying to get money from the state to work on our locker room sized emergency shelter. Like, we know that's something we're going to be money for. We might need at some point to have $200,000 for that, right, to imagine. If we don't get the, the state bonding to do that project, well, by the way, I didn't mean that. We know we have an animal shelter coming down the road. Like, those are very real things, right? At the same time, you know, you're looking at the capital non-recurring, like, we've been very judicious with that. We have things coming up, you know, immediately. Like, we have a new board that we can get for really cheap, where we get, we have to keep that going and not borrow. But I, I don't believe that $75,000 now is going to be a big issue if we know that we could say, all right, we got some money coming in that we can use for something capital, and we can keep our budget along to where it needs to be, and hopefully we'll be in a better situation next year.
But to John's point, the existence of the ARPA funds kind of protected the C and R in some ways because we took stuff out of there that we may have ordinarily taken out of capital not recurring. So it's not, I mean, I see his point. And, and, you know, I know psychologically I didn't become dependent on ARPA. I knew that it was a, you know, a memorable situation, but, you know, the point's well taken, that this is the first year we've done any.
And it's worth, it's worth saying that, you know, with the ARPA, we also did a couple of projects, yeah, that we may not have done, which was kind of the point of doing ARPA. You know, we did, and I know it's controversial, but there was an agreement to $800,000 for the lights and bicycles, right? When they did that, we did that. Did $500,000 for a parking park. So we've done some big things out of ARPA, which we're meant to be done, but yes, we, we driven, gradually used it as revenue placement, and we did it towards capital items that we needed along the way. I don't think that's the same argument as creating a hole in the budget because.
No, but it obscured certain things that we need to be careful not to psychologically, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, we're not relying on ARPA, and I certainly don't rely on most of the permanent parole this way, so. I understand where you're coming from.
I've spent a ton of time on this budget, and I've taken a lot of hits and, and, and a lot of things have happened. And $75,000 out of $98 million, or 97 and some change, is almost just a token to the board of ed for the cuts that they're going to take. This is a token, and, and I please, I wish everybody stays to realize how small the cuts, the, the, the way that the conversation is going is like we're gutting the, the, the public safety or we're gutting the library. These are token, scraping off of the bottom of the numbers, and they're still getting increases, huge increases. And we're going to ask people to walk out of our schools?
You know, I don't, I don't understand, Mr. Chairman, because if you take a look at this, I'm actually, I've been just taking a bigger cut at it than you did for, that you're thinking might, and that should be offset by whatever you cut from the schools, meaning it should cut less from schools. In fact, I originally would have advocated for much more of a C and R to, to keep the school a minimum cut. So, I get it.
Does anybody else have any other questions for the first selectman? I'm sorry?
Can I clarify on the debt service fund?
Sure.
Forget that we've talked a lot about it, so a lot of people know what I'm talking about, that other bucket of money. The debt service fund is, at times when we've gotten premiums from previous bonds and stuff like that, or like when there's holdbacks from the state for renovation projects, that money goes into our debt service fund. It can only be used for debt-related items. So it's not like this other bucket that we could just spend. Yeah, I know you, the board understands that, but I realize that we're on a public meeting and not everybody understands that. I just don't want the people to think that there's like this magic, it can only be used for debt-related items.
And, and the same for capital non-recurring, right? It's another savings account that's set up. And I think the first selectmen suggesting, if I understand it, I think it's pretty straightforward, is let's take some money out of those savings accounts rather than fund it through operating. Board of finance, right, with a determined direction as we go through this, it probably is best, right, to consider those discussions, we'll get to the accounts. But for the benefit of the audience, these are savings accounts that we have funded through the budgets of prior years that now I think we're thinking about using, or the suggestion is to perhaps use them to offset some of the.
I think the more is we're not funding it as much this year, not using.
Yeah, if dollars are fungible, kind of, you can say it either way, but the net result of it is maybe reducing the, using the reduction by taking money out of a savings account.
And just, and just for the public, we did not add anything to the C and R and road account. We kept them flat because we knew there was going to be hard decisions. It's not like we added a bunch of money. We're just, we're not even keeping up with inflation. If, if something breaks, the boiler or something, you know, we're buying that, we're paying for it. We bought a ladder truck, we, we bought the shooting range, all in cash. Years ago, it used to be put on a credit card, and then again, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it with interest. I'm sorry, Mr. Selectman, I see you're raising your hand there, just or something, and I run a pretty loose meeting.
I guess.
Sure, the only question I'd have is if he took the $75,000 out of savings, that $75,000 that's there next year would have to be made up in the operating budget, correct?
So if we leave the debt service, yeah, so if we use this, lose the debt service plan as it currently is, with $283,000 using it this year, next year, the plan was to use 167. The debt, with using 167 next year, the debt would go down by $43,000.
So we'd be short, it would be like starting $32,000 in our.
No, because, well, yes, you're right, because it would be, we have to use another like 75 to keep the same trajectory, same trajectory.
Yeah, you just have to add it next year. It would just be like, if we, if we had five, four, eight cars, all of a sudden, what we put four under, it looks like this crazy number.
But it's, but it's actually out of a whole separate account that's meant to do this. It's not part of operating, or it's not very whole.
And, and, starting, sorry, but, starting in fiscal year '29, if we don't do anything, any adjusting to the schedule, the starting balance in that account is $1.4 million, assuming a million goes in this year, which it might be higher, could be a little bit lower, but I think conservatively, it's going to go up by a million dollars when the fiscal year '25 audit.
And I'll, I'll say what I'm saying is, Mr. Chairman, even if, if you, if you embody decide that you're still going to do the fire marshal, police, whatever it is, I still recommend you do those other cuts, because maybe that'll reduce the amount that we have to. Um, I still recommend you do those on the cuts, because make a better reduced amount that we have to give to the board. And that, and specifically C N R seventy thousand, the debt service seventy-five and NGO account by five grand. A little more might sixty-eight thousand dollars, but it's sixty-eight thousand dollars more, um, that will come out of somewhere else. So we have all, all for this up to do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just a little.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you. All right, Mr. First Selectman Dan, thank you for your presentation tonight. Um, I was gonna say it's been fun this.
Mr. Chairman, I just, listen, I know it hasn't been at all fun and we've been at odds. I'll tell you one thing though, there's no doubt that you've got your heart in this, you've got your heart for the town. Um, we might battle on how we get there. But I have the utmost respect for what you've been doing and trying to get there. And I mean that wholeheartedly. I know we battle about it.
Cause it might turn to say something nice.
Oh, no, you don't understand.
No, I'm done. I didn't have it ready.
You should say dismissed.
But I can appreciate the, the banter and, and you know, I love a good banter. And so, um, I appreciate your banter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, I'm sorry.
Um, so there were some hands raised. Do you want to address that?
There were some, what, I'm sorry?
Hands raised.
Oh, hand raised. Uh, no, 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 it's not public input.
I, I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let them know that there's no.
I'm sorry. Thank you for your hands up. Uh, there is no public input in this. Uh, there was a presentation for our first selectman. We do have a public hearing coming up and that is the time you, you will hear us talk, you have to answer questions. So, um, we appreciate you being online, um, that we're at tonight. All right. So I think, um, there was, I made some recommendations like the first selectman had, um, mentioned. Um, I do appreciate his input. Um, we can use that later. Um, there is, there was not a number I was trying to get to. Um, I can't believe that we're going to be over a five percent. If you ask anybody, and, and I've probably talked to over a hundred and twenty people, and they can't believe it's over five percent. I understand it's a perfect storm with, with health, uh, health, uh, benefits this year. Um, so. With that, I'm going to make a recommendation that we just jump back to the, um, Department of Education budget. So if you don't mind, I would like to make a motion that we cut seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Board of Ed. And supporting a new number of fifty-eight million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And just not to do the rough math, that is almost three million dollars more this year, um, that the taxpayers are going to pay for. Um, it's well needed. I think they do a good job, but that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion about the Board of Ed's reduction?
If I have just one quick question, what is that as a percentage increase?
So it's six point one seven and in dollars, it from the prior, the current year budget, it'd be three million, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Sorry, three million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
So that would bring their, the Board of Ed budget with new spend would be six point one seven still. Um, and again, we talked about this, it's a six percent. They started over a nine percent. But I think with the savings that the first selectman got to us, um, we're gonna be below that now. Now savings cuts. I'm sorry, did I say savings cuts, reductions, cuts, whatever sounds nicer.
And do we, along the same lines, do we have a view as to what that now means for a blended, you know, rate of payers?
Um, so.
My sheet's kind of updated with some recommended cuts, so if we can talk about.
It's almost a question at the end of the.
I'll give it to you right now. Give me one minute. And just get a hat. So the Board of Selectmen left the projected mill rate based on what we know right now at a five point nine five. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars brings it down to.
That's a percent increase.
Yeah, percent increase, I think it is right, four point nine nine.
Yeah, thank you.
So any other discussion? I just have a comment. I, this, this will be my fourth blended season, right? And, and I remember that Mr. Carter, when, when we were on the board, we used to wrestle over seventy-five, ninety thousand. I cannot believe that we are in such trouble that we have to cut like this. That being said, we've all been elected to do the right thing to the town of Ethel. I, I'm gonna say it more than once, but it, it is so crucial to make this right. Because the budgets are split, split, excuse me, when this goes to referendum. I am very concerned that people will run out and vote for one of the budgets and not the other one. And then the other side is in some serious trouble because to Brad's point, and we talk about all the time, we've got the budgets as lean as we could. So that we're not overtaxing our residents of Ethel, right? So I'm in favor of this motion of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But the only reason it's for the better of all of Ethel. As hard as it is for me to swallow this, you know, our kids are the most important thing. I say that in my, that, that our, our parents raised us in this community to give us what we have today, but there's no other alternative. I mean, we can't ask the taxpayers to go to the voting booth and, and to, and, and to say yes to a seven percent increase. It just, with all of the other polls on people's budgets, it just doesn't work for this working class community. And we may not like the cuts and we may not like the final number, but we've gotta go out and sell this budget. Um, because again, the, the, the average person doesn't know what's in this budget. There's negotiated contracts. We have to, we, we're good people. We have to give what's in that contract. And healthcare is part of it. Everybody deserves a raise also.
And that's what this perfect storm is about. Um, and it, it's, it comes to a point.
Right. And I think, I think that, you know, you could go to one sector of the town and they could say, you know, approve that budget or no, don't cut, don't cut. The problem is if you go talk and you talk to all different sectors of the town. There's a lot of different needs in the town and there's a lot of people that give you some terrible stories. Uh, they're not sure how they're gonna pay their mortgage next month, you know, or pay their new electric bill or, or whatever it is. So, you know, for the people that are here, I appreciate you being here, but we have some really hard decisions to make it right for everybody to be able to live in Ethel.
Does anybody else have any question on the motion? Any more comments on the motion? I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor of reducing the Board of Ed seven fifty for the number of fifty-eight, one twenty-seven, four eighty-nine. Say, am I saying aye?
Aye.
And, uh, any, uh, no's?
Any?
So we have a no. You have that? Great, great. All right, uh, we'll jump into the four sixty account. Everybody knows that's a, that's a, a building maintenance and something they have going off. Um, I know it's gonna fall on the town. Things have to be repaired, but my motion for that, excuse me. Is a reduction of fifty thousand, which would be a new number of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. That is, uh, above another fifty thousand over last year. So we're, we're, we're lowering the, 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 the interest by fifty thousand. So my motion is reducing it by fifty thousand. The new total will be five seventy-eight and seven hundred and forty-four dollars. Do I have a second?
I'll second up for discussion.
Okay, so discussion.
Um, what I wanted to point out is with this account, and it's similar to the C N R, and we, and I've talked about this, that. If something happens that's, you know, becomes emergent, anybody can come back here.
Hundred percent.
And so that's why.
I think this Board of Finances showed that we support the school buildings and the school system, and they have my word, and I think everybody can voucher that.
So I would, can I amend your motion? Because I just think we could cut more only because they can come back. And I just feel that that would be.
I, I get where you're going. And again, the money that we take out of here.
Yeah.
It's only gonna affect the C N R account. And John and I battled if. Well, if the four sixty, if we don't have any more money in there and they come back to us.
Right.
Then it, our pot of money is the C N R that we're gonna have to take out of there.
I understand that. So it's either one. I mean, there's could be something for the town, but we can't take that for sixty accounts.
Listen, that's just playing a show game. I think during their presentation, they talked about there was, they, they rationalized why they asked for two hundred and six thousand more. Because not only was there maintenance agreements they needed, there was no work that had to be done on it. So.
Yeah, I'm aware.
I think, I think the, the selectman team did the right thing because there's nowhere else to take money. I think Mr. Chairman said, well, we gotta, we gotta find money somewhere without trying to hurt it. And we are gonna make sure our schools, if there's some, if there's a breakdown, support it. So, but what I mean is, so we know there's gonna be some added expenses. So if we take more out, it's like, well, we really should have put more in the C N R because we know there's money being spent.
Okay, I'm sold.
But, well, I would ask, we do have another after the public hearing, you know what I mean?
Oh, no, I know that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did he mansplain that to you?
Yes.
He didn't know what that term was this week.
No.
Yeah, mansplaining.
Well, now he did. Yeah, it is. Come on.
All right. Um, any other comments on the four sixty? I'll try everybody's mind. Everybody in favor? Single, saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, did you vote or you being quiet?
He's just chilling. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna run a quick meeting. Um, so I'll give a minute and if anybody's leaving, um, please, it's distracting to me. I have a hard time paying attention. But if everybody wants to stay, please stay. I'm not asking. I know Dr. Carter has a, a way to drive him. Will you stay?
No.
It would be nice if people did stay though, I gotta tell you.
I know.
Everybody.
She'll watch the video in the morning. Chief was pretty impressive the last public hearing, you know, he had all the people's support.
Oh, yeah, he was flying on the coattails there the morning night.
Until he figured out that wasn't the case.
Good night, Dr. Carter. She's not, she's not.
Yeah, it's fire days.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. All right, if you don't mind, I would like to jump back into the front of the list, which are also likely to go over here. Yep, number one hundred, the selectman. I'd like to make a motion that we cut fifty thousand out of Dan Carter, so.
It's the position, not the. It's the position.
All right. And, and so again, if anybody would like to make a motion or change a motion, but I've been working on it for a little bit. So, um, I would take criticism, please.
Do you have any more copies of that, what you were working on?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, I'm good.
And you're gonna make a motion?
Yes. All right, so, uh, account one hundred, selectman, I would like to approve the three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. I thought they had came in, um, very low, um, which, uh, that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the selectman's account, one hundred? Everybody's mind, everybody in favor on the selectman's account? They said aye. Excellent. One oh five, economic development. Um, there was a small increase on here, but my motion is to approve ninety-one thousand dollars even. Well, for the economic development. Do I have a second? Any other discussion on economic development? Does everybody understand what economic development is?
So the addition there was just up for line fifty-one oh one salaries, right? That was just an increase?
Yes.
From eighty thousand?
Yep, yep, that was a, um, I, she's not union, I believe, right? And, but that's a recommended, did she put that in there?
No, that's actual salary.
That's actual salary, right? So that is the motion for ninety-one thousand economic development. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, treasurer, this one here, we really struggled with, but I'd make a motion that we're, Will's not here, right? Uh, for one-ten treasurer's salary, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars, there's no increase. I would, my motion is to approve the fifty-five hundred.
Second.
Second.
Before you, I should have mentioned it with the first selectman, the Board of Finance is in charge of all elected officials' salaries. Um, so if you were, if the board is gonna act on it, that would be the time to do it while you're discussing this. So.
And will you please remind us of all?
I've got them, I've got them listed. All right, um, so, so you're gonna be saying aye in favor? I'm gonna let the record show. Uh, comptroller, this was another we struggled with. Yeah, exactly. I think first selectman's in charge of it.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, I'd like to make a motion for the comptroller, one twenty, for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. And any other discussion on that? Just to try everybody's minds, single, saying aye in favor? All right, moving downtown clerk. Now this is the one, uh, she's an elected official. There is a, a, a salary adjustment in here, um, for, um, an increase for, for the town clerk because she's an elected official. So we want to keep her up with all the other, um, salary employees in this department and townwide. Um, so that is built in, John. This is one of them that's built into that, creating their salary line. So I'd like to make a motion for the town clerk, one thirty, for two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Do I have a second?
And then you, like, have a motion that sets the salary at, at a number.
Okay, so what's currently baked into this? So.
I, I got it.
Because it's changed.
So I'd like to make a motion that we, and it's in salary, right?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we add thirty-two fifty to line one thirty, fifty-one oh one. Or the total, adding it to thirty-two fifty. Brad, you wanna give me the new code?
So that, so that would make the general fund portion eighty thousand dollars. So the salary.
Right, she gets from the train station.
Two pieces of it.
There's two pieces.
Hold on, let me give you the, what you'd be setting the town clerk salary at. That'll be, you need to necessarily set the, you're gonna set the budget number when you vote on the department.
Yep.
So it'd be setting the town clerk salary at eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars.
How much is that from the train station?
The train station currently pays nine point five percent. So currently the train station is just over eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
For all the work that.
She asked for in her presentation?
No, she asked for a lot more.
No, 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 believe it or not, that is the number that she carried in.
With the documentation that she gave us?
Yes.
Yeah, the three thousand, two ninety-five was from the town clerk what she asked for.
It was three two nine five?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's the amount we're dipping her in.
Yes, yeah, we hadn't changed her number. We just had to break it out of that salary because the salary included everybody in the office.
Okay, so, yeah, so the general fund portion.
Yep.
Would be eighty thousand and then there's another eight thousand and twenty-seven, it's a change.
Well, the eighty seven is with the train money.
Yes.
But we shouldn't be talking about the train money.
But you set the, you set the town clerk's salary. That's the town clerk's salary is eighty-seven, seven, nine.
Right, and then later.
Budget wise.
Okay.
Is, so in the past, you've always voted on the full amount.
Yeah.
And then the allocation does the allocation.
They take care of that.
Without the motion.
Okay.
I apologize for, for the fan for being difficult, but what, do you have any?
Did you see John?
Yeah, so.
Kids.
Currently, the town clerk's salary is eighty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars even. That's what the Board of Finance said in that last. So of that, ninety point five percent gets paid by the general fund, which is seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-nine cents. Leaving the train station pays eight thousand, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents.
So the new salary line, fifty-one oh one, is?
The new salary line is what's, was requested.
Yeah, it's here.
Here.
Yes.
We, we had to figure out exactly out of that fifty-one oh one, yep, what Lisa was getting.
Yeah.
Okay, correct. So that you'd have to set, I know Karen has a question, sir. You'd have to set the town clerk's salary at the eighty-seven, seven ninety-three. And then the general fund hit will be a little bit less than that because I'm probably not gonna adjust the nine and a half percent. And the train station part will rise equally.
Yep.
Yeah.
But you're talking small dollars.
Yeah, that's a, it comes out of a fund, um, that's separate.
It's like a set amount. It's not reset.
Yeah, we raised it a couple of years ago.
Okay. Who sets that amount that comes up?
So the Board of Finance set it a number of years.
Okay, so that's just.
Yeah. Based on information about how many hours a week she spends dealing with the train station.
And so she's still spending that same amount of approximately?
Yes, yeah. So it varies obviously week for week depending what's going on. Um, but I know she is on top of the train station and it's, she gets all the calls for it anytime there's actually issues with the key ask and all that stuff. So.
So let me start off with a new motion if you don't mind. One thirty, uh, town clerk. I'd like to make a motion that we set the town clerk's salary at eighty-seven, seven ninety-three even. And then the new total would be two, two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Mary, you got that?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for clarifying.
So the only, so before we vote on it, the only thing that I want to mention is. So the only, so before we vote on it, the only thing that I want to mention is during the, the town clerk's, um, presentation, she showed us other, um, communities, you know, like sides of Beaufort, and for the record, I want to make sure everybody knows that that is between a three and a four percent increase in her pay, and that's kind of in line with all other, um, salaries in the town hall. So it's not like we threw a big number at it. We just tried to keep her up with the staff, the pay increase that her own staff is getting. I don't want people to think it's this huge number we, we snuck in there with some crazy wording, okay?
All right, so any other discussion on the town clerk? I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor saying aye?
Aye.
I think it's the record show unanimous. All right, tax assessor, um, I'll make a motion that we approve two hundred eighty two thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars for the tax assessor of, for that department.
Second.
Second, any other discussion on the tax assessor? I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, one fifty, tax collector. Um, there was, I didn't see anything. They came in a real solid budget, and, uh, I'd like to make a motion for one fifty for the amount of two hundred forty one thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, any discussion on tax collectors? All their salaries in there, Brad, I think all their increases and all that in there.
So the tax collector's office is paid sixty percent by the general fund, twenty five, twenty percent by the water, twenty percent by sewer. Uh, two of the members are union, that contract's up, two are non-union. So any adjustments in this account, other than step increases, are in the wage adjustment.
Excellent. All right, so, um, so we had a motion, we had a second, and any other discussion on the tax collectors? Try everybody's mind, all in favor, if you can say an aye? All right, professional services. Um, again, everybody can see the actuals, um, there's a big increase here, but this is one of these things, if we don't fund, then we're, Brad, well, he doesn't have any more here. Um, but, um, we're, we run into trouble with this. So there was an increase. I didn't like to see it, um, but it's actually what we're using. So I make a motion at one sixty, professional services is three hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. Do I have a second? You have a second. Any other discussion on professional services? Everybody know what this is, right? Legal fees?
Yeah.
I'll try everybody's mind, everybody in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
Great, probate court, not real sexy here, um, eight thousand dollars. I make a motion that we fund the probate court for eight thousand dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Um, point of information, so it went up five hundred dollars. Do we have to vote on that? Are they elected?
No, it's not salaries, it's just the town's portion of it.
Okay.
The state pays the.
Oh, yeah, okay, got it.
I'll try everybody's mind, everybody in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Probate court, thank you.
Um, IT department, um, I recommend that we fund the IT department for four hundred and eight thousand and five hundred and three dollars. Do we have a second? Any discussion about IT? I'll try everybody's minds, everybody in favor, seeing what's saying aye? I think we're all good. All right, town insurance, um, I'd make a, I'd make a motion that we cut twenty five thousand dollars out of fifty three twenty-five, and then in my motion also, on fifty three thirty-one, property and liability insurance, another twenty five thousand, uh, with a total, new total of one million, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and third, oh, I'm sorry, one million, two hundred and ninety-five and three seventy-one dollars, um, to fund that town insurance account. Do we have a second? I appreciate that part. And can you tell everybody you cried a little bit in our meeting today?
That was personal.
Oh, don't make him confess that.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second for the reduction and the total of one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars. I'll try everybody's mind, who's in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Second.
We have any discussion on, on the town insurance?
Explain this?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, uh, planning and zoning, um, I'd make a motion for two, Mary, do you need water or anything? I mean, I know I'll go pretty quickly. Thank you for keeping up. Uh, two fifty, planning and zoning, I would make a motion that we fund this account at three hundred thousand and seven thirty, uh, dollars. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion on planning and zoning?
It, yeah, I, so the proposed, it's less than they requested. I'm just wondering, is it, is, um, that's retirement affecting that salary temporarily or not yet, or?
The, her salary is, is carried in here, but in my personal opinion, anytime you rehire somebody, especially in this environment, we'll probably need more money.
Oh, I know. I just want to know if it temporarily affected it or if that's all in the request.
It's in the request.
Thank you.
I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Register voters, this is another elected official, and, um, again, I, they, they had asked for a small increase in their salary. I think this one department always gives back, um, and, and I would support their increase. There's, uh, two register voters, and each of them had a one thousand dollar increase, and that is in this number. Um, Brad, is this one of them that we have to set the salary again?
Yeah, so right now, the current salary of each registrar, and there's two of them, is twenty-two thousand dollars.
Twenty-two thousand.
So their request, that includes the, in the one forty-six, one thirty-five, is for each one of those salaries to go to twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three.
The deputy registers is set by the first select.
Right, because they're not elected official.
Correct.
Excellent. Um, I, I like to make a motion for account three thirty and let that show the record that there's a one thousand increase for each voter, registrar voter, as twenty-three thousand is their new salary, and the total is one forty-six, one thirty-five.
Second.
Any discussion, I think everybody knows where we're going there?
I just want to applaud the registrars because they recycle their paper and write on the backs. No, which is.
We do.
The back of ballots.
Back of ballots.
That's what they do.
All right, all in favor on the voter registers? Okay, thank you. Uh, boards and commissions, this is, um, money for, um, this is money held in there for secretaries and recording minutes or something.
Yeah, so secretary salaries, the assessment appeals, um, by like state law, you have to pay them something to do in the assessment appeals, um, if it's minor, that's a thousand dollars of it. It's the planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals, inland wetlands, it's the legal expenses that they, and then when they need like outside engineers and stuff like that, some of that's in here, and then the charter provisions in here, uh, which was reduced by five thousand dollars by the board of selectmen. Um, the current year budget for that is fifteen thousand. Dan and I were looking at it before the board selected that, and said, there will be some expenses in twenty-six for the charter. We're thinking that ten thousand should be enough to carry the load.
So I make a motion for boards and commissions account one, I'm sorry, three forty, for sixty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Do I have a second? Have a second. Any other discussion on this boards and commissions, three forty? All in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Uh, boards and commissions, this is, um, money for, um, this is money held in there for secretaries and recording minutes or something.
Yeah, so secretary salaries, the assessment appeals, um, by like state law, you have to pay them something to do in the assessment appeals, um, if it's minor, that's a thousand dollars of it. It's the planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals, inland wetlands, it's the legal expenses that they, and then when they need like outside engineers and stuff like that, some of that's in here, and then the charter provisions in here, uh, which was reduced by five thousand dollars by the board of selectmen. Um, the current year budget for that is fifteen thousand. Dan and I were looking at it before the board selected that, and said, there will be some expenses in twenty-six for the charter. We're thinking that ten thousand should be enough to carry the load.
So I make a motion for boards and commissions account one, I'm sorry, three forty, for sixty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Do I have a second? Have a second. Any other discussion on this boards and commissions, three forty? All in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
All right, we're up to, uh, three eighty, parks and rec. Um, I'd make a motion that we fund park and rec for two million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Um, that was one that came in very reasonable. I think that's a good, um, uh, good program. It really, um, makes a community out of it. So, um, any other comments on park and rec? I'll try everybody's minds, everybody in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
All right, uh, three ninety, employee benefits, this is another one that, um, Brad had said that we could squeeze out a little bit. We're, we're trying to squeeze every little penny, um, to get this budget through. So three ninety, I'm sorry, uh, so under fifty-one thirteen hospitalization, I make a motion that we cut thirty thousand dollars total for benefits for this account is seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, I'm sorry, thousand and thirty-eight dollars even. So do we have a second?
Uh, you want me to explain the thirty?
Yeah.
So, um, meeting with Jan and, uh, Dr. Carter from the board of that today, uh, we reached out to the state, who has the partnership plan for the health insurance, um, because they're supposed to announce the final numbers for the renewals this week. He said it's going to be towards the end of the week, which doesn't help us when we're meeting tonight, uh, but we will get final numbers before the budget is set. Um, right now, the state's talking about being up, uh, ten to twelve percent plus a one percent adjustment for Fairfield County. So in essence, an eleven to thirteen percent increase in health insurance costs, we were carrying thirteen percent. He said, we should be able to go with the middle number for now, and they'll finalize at the end of the week. One percent in health insurance is roughly thirty thousand dollars. So we're hoping that at some point we can take a little bit more, um, out of here, but what we know now is the number we should be budgeting is twelve, so we're budgeting twelve.
Okay, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to look at it dead close and, and be that, you know, instant.
Oh, yeah, what about the board state about it?
He's been calling.
What's that, yeah, let's call him down.
Yes, well, but, but the thing is important that everybody knows that we're trying to not, to take it where it could be taken from and not hurt town services, any town services, right? Because that's important. So I appreciate that they're working a second look.
Okay, so my motion was to reduce five one one three of thirty thousand dollars. The total is seven million, two hundred sixty-eight thousand and thirty-eight dollars. We have a second. Does anybody else have any? Everybody's mind, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, four oh five, internal government, um, yep, I'd like to make a motion for six hundred fifty-two thousand, nine twenty-nine. Right?
Second.
Second, and so there's some paramedic stuff in here, um, we had a big increase during COVID, so that's a big chunk of it in there, and you can see it all broken down. The selectmen did make some adjustments, the heart busts and stuff. Do we have a motion, a second? Anybody have any questions for four oh five? Second. Try everybody's mind, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
Utility charges, four ten, this is a great one. This is an eye opening. The average person knows it's, it's unbelievable. I'd like to make a motion, our utility, for three million, six hundred and one thousand and one hundred dollars. Um, it's incredible. This is gasoline utilities. Do I have a second on that? All right. All right, any other questions on the utilities account?
Those streetlights are really sucking it up, aren't they?
Let's go cut the lines.
I mean.
So some neighborhoods are dark summer break.
No, no, I'm talking about, this, this is streetlights outside are like every two. Yeah.
So we'll get past this one, because this, this is an account you can't do much about. Brad's been watching it very closely. I'll try everybody's mind for four ten, three million, six hundred, one thousand, one hundred dollars. Everybody see what's saying aye? Thank you. Uh, miscellaneous charges, uh, this is where a lot of the wage contingency is. Brad, maybe you can speak a little bit, but I'll make the motion first. Uh, wage, I'm sorry, in miscellaneous charges and transfers, number four twenty, for one million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars. Brad, can we just kind of let everybody know what's in this?
Do you want a second for discussion first?
I'm trying to second for discussion.
Yeah, so the, uh, wage adjustment account, um, originally was requested at two hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-one. Uh, the board of selectmen, through conversations Dan and I had, did reduce it by twenty-five thousand. Um, we have, the police contract is up, the clerical union is up, and this is for non-union, uh, wages. Um, odd, obviously, it's going to make things tighter with removing that twenty-five thousand dollars, but given everything, we're trying to get every little thing out of here we can, it's still leaving us inability to negotiate contracts. Uh, that's obviously the big wild card. Um, the police is a large group. Um, it's a big chunk of this, but it's part of it. Um, so that's kind of the wage adjustment account. This is also where we fund, uh, the capital non-recurring fund, um, which the initial request was to keep it flooded, million dollars. Obviously, the first selectman talks about possibly doing some changes there, not necessarily tonight, but at some point, the board will consider.
Thank you, Brad. I'll try everybody's mind. Is any other comments on, on this account? Try everybody's mind, seeing what's saying aye? Thank you. Senior Center, this is the one we've been waiting for, right, Karen? Uh, four thirty, Senior Center, I think it's a great program. I visited, Bob does yoga down there. You enjoy that? So I'd make a motion for the Senior Center, four thirty, of two hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Everybody knows what that is. Uh, any other discussion? I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
A building inspection, one eighty, I would make a motion that we fund this account for three, three hundred sixty thousand, nine oh eight. Do I have a second? Any other discussion? This is building inspections, obviously, that they're generating.
Brad, have that dollar amount that they generated, or did I start you off here?
Uh, I can get it, basically, six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So the budgeted number for it is, I thought I'd have it faster, I gave myself, I don't believe that. Um, so they're looking at the zoning, but most of it is building, is the budget number for it is four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, great. So we have a motion for, for three hundred sixty thousand, nine oh eight. Uh, we have a second. Any, all in favor, seeing what's saying aye? Emergency services, um, I would like to make a motion, number two ninety, emergency, I'm sorry, emergency management, uh, for forty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
Second. All right, so any other discussion on emergency services? Try everybody's mind, all in favor, seeing what's saying aye?
Aye.
Fire marshal, I would like to make a motion for fifty one oh one, a reduction of thirteen thousand dollars. This is one of those things, we're just trying to get down. I understand it's, it's, uh, public safety, but again, three hundred fire marshal, I'd like to fund this at a hundred nineteen thousand, a hundred twenty dollars. Do I have a second? Second, any other discussion on the fire marshal?
Did you mention the line?
Yeah, fifty one oh one, yeah.
So, so in, in the first selectman's presentations, and I talked about wanting to leave that in there, but I do want to add that it wasn't in there last year, and there was no part-time inspections. Is that correct?
So.
Go ahead, sir. There are part-time inspections, we have part-time fire marshal, the deputy, but we needed more hours for that.
Okay.
We had two, so we don't have enough time. We're just looking for more hours to relieve Tom of that, so he can do these other things that he needs to get done. So the quantity of inspections last year is still happening? Oh, yes. Okay, and probably more. Then, then, then that made me feel better. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, um, the fire marshal, three hundred. Try everybody's mind, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, Beaufort Fire Department, I'd like to make a motion that we fund Beaufort Firehouse, this is South Street Firehouse, for two hundred fifteen thousand and five hundred and two dollars. Do we have a second? This is an account that the first selectman did take. There's a, there's been talk about a retention. Um, we're close on, um, a paid fire department in our town. Um, we're trying to, trying to find ways to not do this. Um, there was a, a forty, was it forty? Four thousand even on, on these, or in that range. Uh, you don't need to get a dollar bond, doesn't. But we're trying to have a, a incentive for the fire, firemen to show up for some of these calls, to make sure we do, uh, publicly, uh, obviously, uh, keep this community safe. Um, so we're going to set up something after this budget season. But we're trying to have a incentive for the fire department to show up for some of these calls to make sure we do publicly, obviously, keep this community safe. So we're going to set up something after this budget season, a little more discussion, and I think it's important. But it was taken out, it's not because of that, we're not, it's not important, it's important to us. But we're going to deal with that in another way.
As long as Matt mentioned that in another part of the budget, we already included the lines. Nothing in it.
That shows the importance of that, it's a need that we're.
Hundred percent.
Give a lot of credit for what they do. All right, so we have a motion to fund South Street Firehouse for 215,502. We have a second, any other discussion on the Firehouse? Everybody's mind, all in favor, is anyone saying an aye? All right, Stony Hill Fire, this is another one, again, it was taken out, but we're going to set it up in a different fund and the mechanism is there. 320 Stony Hill Fire, I would like to make a motion that we fund it for 214,800. We have a second. So same thing, again, that's our annual stuff. I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so this is, okay, 360, the Police Department. Again, very small adjustments, I'm trying to, trying to show that there's skin in the game for everybody. So salaries, I would like to make the motion that we cut. And again, salaries is all grouped in overtime and everything, it's not, everybody's going to get paid, it's just, it's just a number. If they run over on salary, on overtime, it's always going to be taken care of, but we're trying to tax the taxpayers as little as possible. So 5101 under salaries, I'd like to make a reduction for $15,000. Okay, so part of my motion also would be 5313, I'm sorry, 54, oh no, 5403. 5403 capital equipment for $10,000 reduction. The total is $6,458,433. So do I have a second on that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, again, this is a, we have a second, this is one of the things, we're just trying to find something to, to, to make this budget pass. I think if this budget doesn't pass, I think we're all in trouble here. So any other questions on the police? Yes, Karen?
So the reduction, it assumes to be overtime.
Yes.
But if they actually work the hours, we're going to pay any? Of course, so this is kind of smoke and mirrors.
Not really.
No, we're making the budget lower, it looks better for the public to know yes on it, but we're going to spend that money anyway, maybe even more, but I don't know.
No, that's not necessarily true.
That's, again, if they don't use the money, then they don't use it, you know what I mean? But it's less.
But they're telling us they're going to use it. The budget they put forward is based upon what they realistically think they're going to use. And we're saying, no, you're not, they're going to come back and use it anyway, it's going to get paid anyway. So this is kind of a trick.
Well, there's, there's, when there's offers are out on workers' comp, the workers' comp pays their salary. So this is all in their salary, so basically, they can do what they want in here. And we're hoping that they have some savings in here. So under, under a $6 million for salary, it's $15,000. And it's earmarked as overtime, and we're hoping they don't use it. But sometimes, but can I ask, sometimes this, this problem, this salary line doesn't be a problem until May of next year. And then we might recognize some savings in some other lines that we could transfer money out of other accounts and then fund that 5101. So then, so all year, we didn't tax the taxpayer too much, and we found, hopefully found some savings in utility. Brad said utilities. I want to correct, Chief Pugger's done a pretty good job. If they realized they're trending higher in the overtime, he might say, okay, well, let's not do as much in the armory, or, you know what I mean? But they stay within their whole.
As well.
Right, they stay in their whole line of six and a half million dollars.
So they've got some ways to make adjustments in there as well, so they can funnel money towards overtime.
You say funnel?
I know, funnel.
That don't sound illegal.
I mean, it's obviously, they're not going to say, oh, we're out of overtime budget, we can't come on this call.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, I'll turn everybody's mind on 360 for $6,458,433, is anyone saying an aye? All right, Social Services, I make, I'm sorry. So account 200, Social Services, I'd like to make a motion that we fund it, $115,750. So any other, again, she does a great job in there, very caring person. Any other discussion on Social Services for 115,750? Hearing none, I'll turn everybody's mind, say an aye? All right, Health Department, this is another one that was, came in very tight. So 350, Health Department, I'd like to make a motion that we fund it, 400, I'm sorry, 544,902. Do I have a second? Do you have a second? Any other discussion on Health Department? I'll try everybody's minds, is anyone saying an aye? Thanks for hearing me. All right, 220 Fleet Maintenance, I'd like to make a motion that we fund this, $437,200, I'm sorry, $826 for Fleet Maintenance.
Second.
Second, all right, any discussion, everybody knows with Fleet Maintenance, maintenance on all the town vehicles. I'll try everybody's minds, is anyone saying an aye? All right, Public Works, 230, I would like to make a motion that refund Public Works for $472,486.
Second.
Second, any other discussion on Public Works? I'll try everybody's minds, is anyone saying an aye? Highway Department, 240, I would like to make a motion that we fund Highway Department, 240, for $2,627,320.
Second.
Second, any other discussion on Highway Department? I'll try everybody's minds, is anyone saying an aye? All right. All right, Transfer Station, I'd like to make a motion that we fund 245 Transfer Station for the total of $227,572. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Transfer Station? Just the fleet table's still in this budget, right? This reality?
And it's, that's operationally.
Can't answer for that. All right, I'd like to make, I'm sorry, that motion, we have a second, any other questions on Transfer Station? Let's try everybody's mind, is anyone saying an aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Building Maintenance Department, 260.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. If we can answer it.
I'm back on Highway, I noticed that they've taken Tony out of road construction. Does that not mean we're going to be able to complete the plan list in front of?
That's correct. Again, this is an account that they, they had 1.2 million. We brought it back down, this is one of the accounts, we brought it back down to what we spent last year without any increase to the taxpayer. There is going to be a little bit of reduction on the miles paved. And we had a pretty good discussion about that, but this definitely does not fund that whole wish list. All right, so we did a transfer of building, building maintenance, 260. I'd like to make a motion that we fund building maintenance for $930,639. Second. So Building Maintenance, is there any questions on that? Try everybody's mind, is anyone saying an aye? All right, Tree Warden, 270, I'd like to make a motion that we fund that account for $171,500. Second, any discussion, Tree Ward? Try everybody's mind, is anyone saying an aye? Debt Services, this is always the one we want to cut, but we can't. So 440 Debt Services, I'd like to make a motion, and just so everybody knows, this is the mortgage payments on all our new buildings, our police departments, our schools, we paying $5 million in mortgage payments this year. So I'd like to make a motion for account 440 of $5,245.
Second.
We have a second, all right.
$97 million budget.
All right, I'll turn everybody's mind, everybody's in favor, is anyone saying an aye? All right, so we're up to 435, whatever. This was, again, just trying to shake the tree a little bit. I'd like to make a motion that we take $30,000 from 5101.
But you don't.
I'm sorry, that's why I'm confused here, I'm sorry. So I'd like to make a motion that we're reducing that account, and whatever way they feel is the smartest for the town, of 30,000, but that represents $985,223. So we have that, so I'll turn everybody's mind, is any other discussion in the library? Try everybody's mind, is anyone saying an aye? So. So we did the Board of Ed.
So the Board of Finance would have to vote on the town side. That includes the town operating, the debt service, Board of Ed Maintenance. And that amount would be $39,146,155.
Total, and that's with, again, building maintenance, debt services, and town operation.
Correct.
So the motion I would make is $39,146,155. So that is the town, any other discussion on the town budget? All right, that's the whole deal. Is anyone saying an aye? So the, the total Board of Ed budget.
You already voted on it.
Yeah, we did, because of the bottom line, so now you want a motion for the total, right?
I think typically the boards do, even though it doesn't show on there. It's not tied again. So that total between the town and Board of Ed would be $97,273,644. I know you have it, but I like to read the numbers.
Earn your keep, your salary, right? There's no overtime for you.
It's all over.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we send this, this budget to our public hearing Next, we have a second, we have a budget.
That represents, the town as a total would be 5.21% increase in expense year over year.
So let's just, let me just go over this. So the town total budget, okay, because again, the First Selectmen did a great job on this, I believe, is 3.82. And any year, that would be an amazing number, so three. Yeah, 3.82. And then the Board of Ed's new number, and again, there's a perfect storm, healthcare, I think we all know about it in this room, is 6.17. The total budget, when you add both of these numbers, it's 5.21 of new spending. So I know everybody's interested in, in the mill rate increase, that's down the road. I, I think if we take care of new spending number, the mill rate follows, so. That is all I have. I brought a nice tea. I'm sorry, you like the moment? All in favor? Yeah, because I had lots of discussions, and that's what people ask. What is it going to mean for my taxes?
So the current mill rate is 29.17 mils. With what we know now, there are some things with motor vehicle that the Board of Selectmen have to look at. The new mill rate would be 30.55, which would be an increase of 1.38 mils, or 4.74%.
Brad did allude to the motor vehicle. As you know, we, I can't believe it hasn't took place yet, there's a new way they're going to calculate the, the the way they value the cars. And we haven't done it, it's going to start this July, but now that Hartford brought in that we can raise it 5%. I think there's a lot of communities that depended on this car stuff, and they said, oh, we better fix this. So it's not a huge number. Brad and I did all kinds of cards today, some are going to go down and some are going to go up. It's, it's, it's no way to do it, but.
It may not pass. It passed the House and passed the Senate, right now the governor's getting, he might veto it.
Oh, I thought he signed it.
Yeah, I don't think he signed it, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we shouldn't.
We got in with like a couple of the things they really need. So I'm hoping it goes through, but he indicated that he was.
So. What's that? I don't trust it. So let's try. What are our revenue assumptions? Right, I'm sure you all know this, I have to remind myself. Expenses was one number, the mill rate is really the amount by which the expenses exceed these other non-taxpayer revenues. So, so what assumptions are we using in revenue?
So the, one of the big assumptions is that we're going to use the 500,000 from the Tax Stabilization Fund, which is the next item on the agenda.
Tax stabilization.
Tax stabilization fund. Has, the, probably the riskiest assumption is that what the governor proposed, the town getting the $10 million in ECS, is what the town gets in ECS. Because that's a $1,159,485 change. So $1,159,485 increase budget-wise for us. That's a huge assumption, we talked about it at the.
There's a risk there.
At presentation. And it assumes that we're, that interest isn't going to completely drop off. The current year budget for interest is 650,000. Right now, I'm budgeting $650,000. Last year, we brought in $1,990,000. This year, we're probably going to do about that same number. So it sounds, somebody would say, well, why aren't you bumping it up? Because interest is volatile. Right now, the Fed, everything indicates, because of what's going on in the world, that there, if they drop it, it might not be anything, but they could just equally, just as easily raise it. But if you look back on what we've done in interest in the past, and I will pull it up because I don't have it memorized.
But if that happened, couldn't we just send out an early text?
We don't want to do that.
No, we never want to do that.
So as I said, in 2024, we did $1,990, so $2 million. The year before that was 540,000.
We said a year.
Yeah, the year before that was 60,000.
60?
Yes, so we went from 60,540 to just $2 million. And we're going to probably most likely do 2 million again. So as much as, if I knew this was going to continue, it'd be great to drive it out. But we could be sitting here going, we have a $2 million hole in our revenue. What we're, so right now, if we had $2 million in interest, it's $1,350,000 more than we budget. It'll fall out to the fund balance, or we can use it for tax stabilization to help in future years. We can use it for capital needs. So obviously, that's a good problem. I wish I could say, let's bump this up by a million dollars and drop the mill rate more, but it's, it's inherently risky with the interest piece. It's a gamble, we already have a million dollar gamble that the state is going to actually give us in ECS. And it's something that can just very quickly erode.
So we have about $2.3 million of these revenues. Tax stabilization fund, we know, we, it's within, we're set up so that we have the discretion to to do exactly what we're doing now. Touch the 500,000, so that we know it's good. Sounds to me like it's a very prudent risk assumption that the 650 on interest. The ECS number. How are we, how are we feeling about that? And I'm curious, what happens if we don't get?
Dr. Carver doesn't usually, she's not usually positive about these things, and she's about as positive as she can be.
Is she?
Yeah, I've heard he is a word hope before, a word that doesn't exist to my brand, right? But you know, she's.
It's not a strategy.
No. But just that she, she's, I think she's pretty sure, don't you think Brad?
I think Brad has a better feel for that.
So. Last year, we budgeted 8,881,000, because that's what they said we were going to get. When the governor proposed his budget last February, he said we were going to get 8,661, or whatever that number is. At the end of the day, what we got was 8,661. So I think the governor, him going to the $10 million, gave us a lot of credibility. They changed the law on it, that Dr. Carver explained that now that it's supposed to be set and stolen by like January 30th, 31st, we end up getting the number in February, but it's, they're trying to safeguard some of this stuff. If it's actually safe.
That's a probability, what happens if?
Even more so, she has to do like basically a whole, I said like an application, but explain what we're doing.
That sounded like it was almost her fault, as long as we're using it for the three Rs.
Yeah, but now it's a little more, we have to do a little more work to get it, because they're, they're really taking attention to it. I don't, I don't think it'd be a lot.
She said it was a very straightforward process, and it's justified just an increase. She said it was a very, she said it was a very straightforward process, and it's justified just a increase. And she's very sure that she knows what those.
So I think it's pretty good bet. What's what?
So, yeah, so after we had set our budget last time, state reduced, well, they reallocated. They didn't reduce the ECS funding, they reallocated it, and the cities got more, and we got two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less. When I, we found that out, we brought it to the board of finance, and the conversation at the time was, it's been four months since we, or a couple, two months probably since we set our budget. Interest looks like it's holding, we think we're gonna make it up there. So it's, our hope is, if we do take a reduction, it's minor, and if interest rates are holding, we'll make it up in other revenue. Um, but yeah, if we get, if the number's nine million and interest rates drop, we're gonna have to, after this budget set is figure out how we're gonna fund this. And like, because if we had a huge shortfall in revenue, like ECS was cut to the tune of a million dollars, I think it was like eight, nine years ago now. Um, and the first selectman, the superintendent, the comptroller at the time, sat down and go, how are we gonna make this up? And the town had some health savings that made up some of it, and the board of ed, through not filling positions, kicked eight hundred thousand dollars under budget that year because ECS was cut late. So they did a part, we did a part. If we take one of these monumental things hits late, it's gonna be the same situation. When we took the two twenty-five, we had a conversation, Dan, myself, and Dr. Carver had a conversation. And we were pretty sure at the time, and obviously now, we're really sure, we are gonna be able to make up our portion, because they took a two hundred thousand dollar hit in excess cost at the same time. So the conversation was, all right, we'll take the ECS hit, because we think we can absorb it. You guys, forget that piece of it and make sure you deal with your part of it. Uh, honestly, if something that happens, all things are on the table of how to fix.
Yep.
You know, the last thing, I know the chairman joked about going back to the people, the last thing we want is to go back.
We're not going back to the people. We're not going back to the people.
Yeah. So it's like we talked about this year with utilities, with what the state did with Pira. After we set a budget, created a huge hole in our budget. We're talking about possibly not being on the fund C N R a hundred percent twenty-five. We hope through our refinancing of our debt, which is two hundred thousand dollar savings, we have some vacant positions, which we're not paying salaries and not paying benefits on. Um, we have, so hopefully some other savings, um, that we're gonna be able to fill that hole and still put the million dollars in C N R. But we didn't wanna go back to the people and say, we need to adjust this budget if we can absorb it for other ways. And that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with, I think we all do, of finding somewhere else, right?
Yeah.
Subsequent supplemental tax bills, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah.
I guess I just wanna kind of get a sense, and hopefully we never have to have this discussion again. All right, but if, if we're having a bad day, and it comes in less than, let's just call it one point one six.
Yeah.
We have a sense for timing of when that, so we forget solidify.
Supposedly solidify now, but we won't really know until the state sets their budget.
Till the end of June.
Because the legislation can change, even though they're supposed to be like, they're supposed to be set in stone, doesn't mean that they can't do legislation to change that it's set in stone. You know, when they hold all the cards.
But that's why everybody was so confident during the presentation, that that was gonna be the number. Well, because it was the governor's first number, and what we got last year was the governor's first. So that.
Right.
I was having a conversation that it needed to be fully funded.
Yeah.
Well, that was why I asked the question, John, right? If something near and dear to us, who's at risk? In other words, if we were wrong, how do you feel about assessing this risk? And it's easy to be bullish on something when there's no downside to it. But if there's a leading downside to it, a lot of people tend to be a little bit more reflective on the risk assessment. And, and maybe what you're telling us, Brad, is, and it's, again, it's a shame, I, I think we'd be better informed if Dr. Carver could give us her sense of this. But let's just say, it's only gonna be a few hundred thousand less. Is that maybe the worst case scenario? Because I need to go over the budget that says to the town, hey, we're, we're gonna give you this road construction. We're gonna do this capital law recurring, because a lot of those items are safety issues, right? We've got tons of snow piles in there, all the kinds of trucks, fire trucks. And all of a sudden, it hits the fan, we're having a bad day, and we can't fund capital law return.
I don't, I'm sorry, can I just add, to your point that we don't think the whole one point one is ever this. Okay, if, if, hopefully, we're talking about, if they do anything negative to us in this way, the ECS, we're talking about in that same range or. It's the hope, but. I trust the state, I don't trust the state until we get a final number, but I also don't wanna bill a million one in our mill rate that we have even, let's call it a ninety percent confidence in getting.
Right.
I have a ninety percent confidence in we get the ten million, that we get within a, a margin that we could probably make up is probably in the ninety-five plus range. Which, you know, like, again, I don't trust the state at all when it comes to giving us things they're supposed to. Um, if Dr. Carver's here, she'd cringe if I said the word excess cost, you know, like, but like, I, they are trying to work on.
I, I've talked to the leader of the house, I've talked to the majority, I've talked to long people. They're pretty hot on getting this done, because they understand that we're getting hammered everywhere else with the excess cost. So I think it's gonna be pretty close.
Yeah. And, sorry, some good ones.
I just wanted to, to make a comment, because I'm not a gambler at all, and I feel very bullish about this, simply because I'm in August, it's two thousand and nine. And this is a change in pattern with the governor. So he's not ever, well, he's not ever stuck to the amount he said he would do, and he did last year. So, I mean, not that you can count one as a matter, but, and people have been pounding now with letters.
Uh, and some of it is, the, the adjustment is so large, because they're updating the formula to recognize the fact that Bethel has growth. Right, so other towns are taking reductions.
Sure. Because our student enrollment, and students, and very few other transfer stations.
Correct. And what they're doing is even the towns, if you're taking a reduction, they're phasing the reduction out, which is what they're supposed to be doing for the last like eight years, but they paused in some years and not done it. Um, probably in part because they paused that and paused us, because they didn't wanna give up the money that we're growing. Um, so it's not just a, we're gonna throw more money in the bucket. Bethel's supposed to get a bigger percentage of it, because we're a growing community, and so many of our neighboring towns are not. And so many towns in the state are not. You know, that's where, we're in a unique situation. Um.
What is the bill pay equivalent? All our last stories.
So one mil is currently worth, um, what we know now, two million, seven hundred and thirty, no, that's the car changing already, it's close. Two million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-one dollars. Two, seven, one, seven, zero, six, one.
Mary, I know we owe you one more motion, but maybe you can just read them all back to make sure we didn't miss any?
Oh, please, and read them really slowly, Mary.
Uh, no.
You need to vote on the last one.
Yes, exactly, the total, all right. So I made a motion that we, uh, present a budget to the voters of ninety-seven million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. Unless, Dan, you found more cuts.
Second.
We have a second, all right. Um, all in favor on the final number, the little public hearing? All right, I hope that could show you enough. Uh, thank you, everybody, and thank you, um, everybody on the board for their time.
So we still have.
Yes. So I would like to make a motion that we consider funding the tax stabilization fund of five hundred thousand dollars from our general fund.
So, yeah, we're done, we're done. So now that the twenty twenty-four audit is complete, um, which, well, we haven't gotten the hard copies yet, when I'm out, but I did send it out. Um, the recommendation, my recommendation to the board of finance is you put another five hundred thousand dollars in the tax stabilization fund. My hope last year, um, I know we don't base it on, but that at some point, we wouldn't put five hundred in and take five hundred out. At some point, you'd make off this, like, put five hundred in and use four hundred, put five hundred in and use three hundred. For a bad time, because we're, we aren't always gonna have, last year, we had three million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in excess revenue. Uh, mostly driven by a million dollars from the state that we didn't budget for, and one point four million dollars in excess interest. Uh, that would be great if we always exceeded a revenue for good reason, by a good amount, but it's not always gonna be the case. So we, we may not always have five hundred thousand dollars to put in it, so at some point, we can't just put it in and.
This is the year to use it, right. But for three years, we need to have that tool to do, even to write it out. So, and again, I, I'm, I'm free to set this up, just the, the new members, and I don't, Karen, I don't know if you're on when we did this, but it's set up a fund, and we're able, the fund says we can go up to five hundred thousand from our grand list, okay, I'm sorry, from our general fund, and use it as a tax refund to the.
Also.
It's a tax fund, a refund, it's a, it's a mechanism we have to give the people a little bit of relief. And if this is the year to use it, this would be the year to use it. So, so I made a motion that we fund the, the tax stabilization fund, uh, of five hundred thousand dollars. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Doesn't, don't we have to do a motion to transfer also, didn't you say, Brad, or no? No, no, this is, this is just funding this.
So the board of finance has to do it at a town meeting? So then, this is just, at the annual town meeting, it'll be a line item like it was last year. Uh, so it's actually, the board can't do it without a town meeting, but it needs to vote first to get to the town meeting, and we might as well clean it up now, like we did last year.
I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor, single say an aye.
Aye.
All right, um, one more motion. Bob, would you like to make that motion?
I move that, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your time. Thanks for coming out, everybody.
We're doing a meeting tomorrow, or?
No, no, we're done.